Regular common council meeting for Monday, May 6, 2019. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the roll call, please.
O'Connor, Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
Deeseal.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Atkins Taggett.
Here.
Hall.
There. Also, I need to say that I retain my right to vote. All right, presentation on liquor licensing.
Is this there, annual renewals?
Yes, it is. Um, out there.
Trying to mute that now.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jennifer Rogers, your city clerk, and tonight I'm going to have a present you with some basic information about liquor licensing. In a couple of weeks, we're going to have in front of you, the renewal process will begin May 20th and June 3rd. You'll have some applicants who are renewing their licensing, so I figured it'd be a good opportunity for you to just get in some basic information. It's, I'm not going to go over the League of Wisconsin Municipal Licensing and Regulation, none of that, nothing in debt, but of course, if you want more information on, you know, where to contact me, and I can give you more information. But tonight, it's just a general overview of the licensing basics. But first of all, just want to let you know that the clerk's office and the city has nothing to do with the complexity of the licensing renewals or the process itself. It all has to do, all about the state statutes, the Wisconsin Tavern League, I'm sure some lobbyist has something to do within our municipal code, actually, let me not get ahead of myself, chapters 125 of the Wisconsin State Statutes and chapter 145 of the municipal code of the city of Hudson. A liquor license is a privilege granted by the local governing authority, which is you, and can only be used to the person to whom it's issued. So if anyone out there is wondering, do I need a liquor license? Well, first of all, statutes 125.09 says, "No owner or person in charge of a public place may permit the consumption of alcohol on the premises unless the person has an appropriate license or permit." So magic question is, do I need a license? The best answer is really if you're in doubt, contact the clerk's office and we can help navigate through and let you know whether or not you would need a license for your event or your establishment. So if any charges are made directly or indirectly, or a recovery of the cost of, for a private event are for alcohol beverages, the state requires a person in charge to hold the appropriate license. So I think we're all aware of, you go to a store and you make this, there's a point of sale, you know that establishment needs a license, but also different types that you may not consider is indirect charges. And examples of that is if you go to an event where the ticket price includes the alcohol beverage, the cost of a meal includes the alcohol beverage, or donation is required in order to be able to consume that alcohol beverage. So any kind of direct or indirect, you'll need a license for that. And so, real plainly, what does an alcohol beverage allows? Well, it allows a person to sell alcohol beverages to individual retail customers from a particular place or premises. The sale must occur at the licensed premises with the buyer and seller both physically present at the time of sale. I don't think we have anything like this in town where you can call somewhere to deliver food and they bring you an alcoholic beverage, but if there is, that's not allowed. So the buyer and seller must be physically present at the licensed premises. Different types of alcoholic beverages, there's the Class A, this is our review, hopefully for the most of you, there's different, and it's a little confusing, so the placement of the quotations are pretty important, it's pretty significant. So you have the quotations outside of the, well, let's start at the top here. If it's, the quotation marks is just around the A, that means it's fermented beverages, meaning beer. If it's around the entire Class A, that's intoxicating liquor. There's Class A cider, and then there's a combination of the two, Class A liquor and Class A beer. And then there's the B classification. And again, it's the same thing, it just depends on where the quotation marks are placed. If it's just around the B, that's beer. Outside the entire phrase, Class B, that's intoxicating liquor. And then there's a reserve Class B, and of course, that's just, it's the same thing as a full liquor license, Class B, but it comes at a higher cost. The cost difference is all there, that is different. I can't talk. And then, of course, there's temporary Class B beer, temporary Class B wine, and these are different various events that we'll see throughout the year, and I'll give you some examples of those later. And then there's a wine license, so A, B, and C. Different examples of a Class A combination would be Hudson Liquor, Northland Liquor, Spirit Cellars. We don't have any Class A ciders in the city at the moment, so we have six authorized Type A combinations, and they're all issued, there's none available. There's a Class B, and examples are given for each class there. Class B beer, the beer may be for sale on the premises, consumption, and then, well, both, at the bar, but. And then there's Class C, examples there as well. The temporary classes allows bona fide clubs, chambers of commerce, and churches to sell beer and/or wine at short-duration gatherings. It's most commonly referred to as a picnic license. Okay, so the state imposes a quota for the system of the Class B liquor license only. The quota was, limit was based on population back in 1997. The governing body does not have to grant licenses up to its quota. You may establish a more restrictive quota. So for example, right now, we have 15, it's a good time for this example to come up, we have 15 reserve licenses, but recently, one became available. So if by chance, once you review those applications and you feel that you want to hold on to that one, you definitely can, you don't have to issue, it's, you have that authority to make the decision. So the application process, renewal letters were mailed out to current license holders in March with a due date of April 12th. So the renewals are published in the Hudson Star Observer on May 2nd. Application forms must be completed and received in the clerk's office 15 days prior to council action, and the public hearing is scheduled and placed on the agenda. To continue, council will review the applications and approve it if you decide. So again, that's going to be May 20th and then June 3rd. Record checks are conducted, so there's some collaboration with the fire department to make sure that the facility is up to code. Did I get those two mixed up? So record checks and then fire inspections, and then the clerk's department checks for outstanding debt to the city. And then, once everything clears, the background checks, inspections, and they pay the fees, then, then and only then do we issue the license. So if everything clears out, but they don't pay, we don't issue it. Lastly, an agent, what is an agent? All corporations and limited liability companies must appoint an agent, and pretty much, an agent is given full authority and control over the license premise and over all commercial activities on the premises relating to alcohol beverages. The individual or partnership ownerships are actual persons and carry the same responsibility as an agent. It's a very brief overview, but I figured with the renewals coming up, I wanted to provide you with some type of information. So if you have any questions, I'll do my best, otherwise, thank you for your time.
Anybody have any questions for? Thanks, Jenny.
Yeah, thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
All right, a public hearing for an amendment to municipal code, chapter 255 zoning to include small animal or reptile education businesses. Anyone interested in speaking on the subject?
I know the owners are here as far as, because they've been the plan commission. Tiffany, are you going to talk, address the issue, or?
Probably after the hearing.
After.
The comments.
Okay, if you have a comment, come up to the microphone and give us your name and your address.
Sure. Hi, so I'm Emily Roberts, and I am currently the owner of Snake Discovery, which is a corporation in which I own, that I teach people about reptiles and amphibians. After receiving my bachelor's degree in fisheries and wildlife, I started a position as a naturalist for the Minnesota DNR, where I taught people about natural resources, but it was a temporary position, so when it was over, I wanted to continue it on my own, to teach people about some of Earth's most misunderstood creatures, which in my opinion are snakes and other reptiles. So I started up Snake Discovery, which is now what I do full-time, it is a small corporation now, and we want to take it to the next level, to not only take our reptiles to different locations, like libraries, scouts, nature centers, and parks like what we currently do, but we would like to start up an educational facility in the city of Hudson where people can come to this facility and learn about reptiles there. So we would like to continue our programs in-house, to a point, I would still be traveling with these programs, but we would like to have more of an ongoing facility set up for people to stop by, like schools could have a field trip to this facility. We would also like to combine it with kind of a retail portion where reptiles and reptile supplies would be sold, so that we could teach people how to properly take care of these animals in captivity as well, but we would be striving to push on the educational components of it, whether it's animals in captivity or conservation of these species in the wild.
Could you give us your, us your address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in Hammond, Wisconsin.
Okay.
And then, yeah.
Emily, do you have a location of where you would like the facility?
Oh, yeah. You know, we've been-
We're still in the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So after the comments are needed.
Sure, so I just wanted to kind of recap for whoever hadn't been here in the past, I just wanted to kind of refresh, because I know there's new faces here as well. But that was, I think, pretty much all I had to say. Are there any questions? Okay.
We answer the questions after the public hearing.
So we may call you back up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, would anyone else like to speak in the hearing? Okay, do I have a motion to close the?
Three times, you guys said.
Going once? Going twice? Going three times?
Who to close the public hearing, I think?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, public hearing is closed. Discussion and possible action on ordinance 7-19 to amend municipal code, chapter 255 zoning to include small animal or reptile education businesses.
So hello.
Hello.
Community Development is submitting an ordinance to add a new land use designation to allow small animal or reptile facilities or educational facilities to operate within the city. Such facilities would be allowed to operate within agriculture, residential, general business, central business, and light industrial zones, and they would also be required to submit conditional use permits with, prior to operating their facilities. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise. I would like to mention, Mike spoke with Kathy earlier today to talk about the ordinance itself, she voiced a couple of concerns, if you'd like to mention them.
Sure. One, I thought we should have a definition of small animal, and then I looked at our code section 99, I think, on animals, and there's some inconsistent, inconsistencies between this, this ordinance as it applies to zoning and our animal ordinance, and so I think those inconsistencies need to be either amended or gotten rid of before the council adopts this ordinance. I also just, and this is not a legal opinion, it's just my kind of personal reaction, I don't, you should have a copy of, just a draft of the definition that I asked community development to prepare before today, and I mean, it's pretty broad, it includes geese, wild birds, and that, those are the types of things that may be inconsistent, well, at least the wild birds and reptiles may be inconsistent with chapter 99. Geese, my only concern is that in, they can be aggressive, and so I think council needs to consider, and staff needs to consider, maybe they have, just what types of animals are appropriate for these types of facilities, in what types of districts. So my recommendation is postponement of the ordinance, at least to compare it with chapter 99, to get rid of those inconsistencies, make some amendments to 99. They both talk about reptiles, one has an 18 inches max, if it's over 18 inches, it's considered a wild animal, then it's not allowed. We just don't want to have our ordinances saying two different things, two inconsistent things. So it's no reflection on the applicant or the person who brought forward a potential project, it's simply that we need to be consistent in our ordinances and consider them in a more broader context.
This did pass out a plan commission to approve it, but I would move to a first reading then, and then address the consistency issues.
Yeah, I think what you'll, we'll get back is at least additional amendments either to chapter 99 or this ordinance to flush those inconsistencies out.
So again, I move for-
I'll second your motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Just wait this for the next agenda, then?
Yeah.
So, well, next agenda.
All right. Did you have any questions for Emily while she's here?
I tell you, she, she gave us a good education on this whole thing at plan commission, so she had an executive summary if you wanted to listen. It was kind of eye-opening, right, Mary Claire? The one big thing, though, I should point out is that they were not going, it's not going to affect the ecosystem of the St. Croix Valley if something were to get loose, and there was concerns of that. And if you wanted to ask, maybe she could briefly, that was the big concern, she could briefly explain why.
Also, right, they'll still have to then apply for a conditional use after, once you approve this, then they'll have to go through the conditional use application process, right?
Yes, and the other thing I, other concern that I didn't mention is now, under state law, was revised on conditional uses, and it's a higher standard of evidence and criteria in order to deny, and so I thought perhaps there should be some factors included in this ordinance that the council would consider in deciding on a conditional use, so that if something were to be denied, you'd have an ordinance backing the factors to consider. So I think that's also likely to be added to the ordinance.
You pass that on to staff to add that?
Yes, I talked with Mike this morning, and I emailed Tiffany also, just following up, and Mike and Tiffany talked.
Okay, anything else on that?
So just a question, Emily, do you have a potential location, location where you're thinking?
You know, we're trying to find a building to purchase rather than rent, because we would rather invest the money back into the corporation instead of renting a building, but we have not been successful in finding a building since, I'm working with a realtor, and we, there just isn't a building for sale, other than I think a restaurant across the street, which we can't pay a restaurant, and a building that is not contacting us back, so we do not currently have a specific address.
Okay, thank you.
Would you give us that executive summary that Randy mentioned regarding the St. Croix?
Yeah, so I, since I worked with the Minnesota DNR, I'm pretty familiar with the species, the invasive species over there, which do apply to Wisconsin as well, I just don't know to exactly what extent, but for specifically the St. Croix River, the two species that we've seen when it comes to reptiles, the two species we've seen that are non-native are the American alligator, from an escaped pet several years ago, or released pet, I should say, and the red-eared slider, which is a species of turtle that is very easy to reproduce, so they're cheap, they're sold as cute little hatchlings, kids get them, and they raise them up to about yay-bager so before they can become very messy and the owners don't know what to do with them. Honestly, nobody wants a red-eared slider because they're messy, and so they get released into the wild. So they have been found recently to be able to overwinter in, at least the state of Minnesota, so I'm sure they can in Wisconsin, too, and we are highly against selling red-eared sliders as a whole because of their invasive tendencies. I think college just drilled it into my head to not do anything that involves risking invasive species getting out. We also do not encourage the ownership of alligators as pets for obvious reasons, so those two species that have been found in Minnesota wouldn't be sold at our facility in the first place, so I can assure you, if something were to get out, it wouldn't be one of those species.
And they wouldn't survive the winter?
Right, and the exotic species that we would be selling are species that wouldn't be able to survive our winters anyway. I would, I wouldn't mind selling native species, but in the state of Wisconsin, you cannot sell native species in state, state boundaries unless they are like a color or a pattern morph, like you see an albino snake, that's considered a morph, and we can breed knowing genetics and how genetics work with reptiles, we can breed specifically for albino genetic mutations, and reptiles that are albino, just for an example, of one of these mutations, those can be sold within Wisconsin, because they're obviously not taken from the wild, only those are produced in captivity. So if we were to do native species, they would be morphs, is what I'm trying to get to.
So the business is educational plus selling of some of these animals?
Yes, education to promote conservation in the wild, and education on how to properly care for them in captivity, so a little bit on both sides.
Okay. Any other?
Mm-hmm.
So, thank, thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
So Kathy, question for you, for the, any potential ordinance, would there be some wisdom in putting some kind of language in there about the invasive species, or like banning invasive species?
Well, that's, that was what I was just thinking, you're not, I mean, this is a zoning ordinance, and so it's not tailored to one specific application, if someone meets one of these, or the criteria or definition of small business, they'll be entitled to apply for a conditional use permit. So if there are those types of restrictions, we need to have them in the ordinance, and they didn't teach me in law school about what types of restrictions we want, but I think those are exactly the types of things we're looking for, because it could be, it could be some other type of animal. I mean, this definition and proposed definition of small animal goes way beyond reptiles. It includes rabbits, hare, mink, chinchilla, rodents, you know, and so we're not writing an ordinance for one specific business, and it's important to remember that.
Right. Okay, anything else on that? All right, comments and suggestions from citizens present? Anyone have any comments? Mike?
Good evening, council. I thought I'd take a couple minutes just to update the council and the general public on the Vine Street construction. You know, we've been in pretty good communication with those properties that are adjacent to the project, in communication with the school district, and then also sent letters out to those residents that are on the detour route, the planned detour route, but our office has been fielding a lot of questions from the community abroad about the, about the project, and I just want to clarify some questions and, and just kind of enlighten some people that may be watching tonight. I did draft a letter for a press release, hopefully it'll go in this week's paper, we'll see, I'll, I'll get it to you tomorrow morning, Rebecca. But anyways, so it was originally slated to do a full street con closure today, however, it was pushed back until May 8th, because the materials weren't coming in as quickly as a contractor wanted, so May 8th, which is Wednesday, will do a hard closure from Ninth Street up to Wisconsin. For the duration, for that first phase of the project, is basically going to do underground utility work towards Ninth Street, which means we're able to keep the Wisconsin and Vine Street intersection open until school is let out, and that was one of the main things that we wanted to keep open, is to try to alleviate some traffic congestion. I know it's going to be, it's going to be a headache, no matter what we do up there, but to keep that intersection open so that people can still drop off and pick up from the front of the high school, that was one of our main things. So that'll be open until school is let out June 10th or 11th. And then the other question that we've been getting a lot of is, why didn't you just wait to do the road closure until after school is let out and complete the project before school is back in session in fall? Unfortunately, with the scope of the project, it just wasn't feasible for the contractor to do that, that's only a 10-week stretch minus the Fourth of July and any rain and weather delays, so it was kind of a pick-your-poison, it was either close down the road in the springtime here for a month, or we closed down the road in the fall time for a month, month and a half, so it was kind of either or for us, and based upon the contractor's schedule, we decided to close it down in the spring. So that's kind of the, the update on that. Like I said, I got a, I got a letter to go to the paper to inform people, because they have been calling in, you know, just because, you know, it's one of our main thoroughfares through town, so just because you don't live on that road, you see that's being closed down, and people have all these questions, so I think it's just important to educate the public of, you know, why we're having to do it, you know, what's the scope of the project? I mean, we're doing complete water, main replacement, combining two sanitary sewers into one, we're doing stormwater infrastructure repair, all curb and gutter, road surface, on top of, you know, when we're doing anything with the sanitary and water, we're having to run bypass services for all the residents so that they still have water and sewer availability to their home, so we're having to do a bunch of testing through the state to make sure that, that's all kosher, all the testing for recompaction, so on and so forth. So, you know, as much as I would like to just do the project in that 10-week span, unfortunately, it's just not feasible. So anyways, if you have any questions, if people have any questions, we do have some information on our website, there is a hotline set up for, specific to the project, that would be directed to our field inspector, so if you have any questions throughout the entire project summer, feel free to go online and, and give them a call, so.
There is a direct link on the left menu of the website for the project, so if they click on there, all the updates will be on there, the phone numbers, I'll put Mike's letter out there, so, and we update that every week.
Yep, we'll do weekly, weekly updates every Friday. Andrew Olson from Bolton, Maine does a, you know, weekly breakdown, what happened, what we're going to be doing next week, so on and so forth, to keep everybody informed, so.
What will the detour route be?
Detour, does it need a detour route, is Seventh Street, up Seventh Street Hill, over to Wisconsin, and Wisconsin wraps all the way to the Vine Street, Wisconsin intersection. So after school is let out, then we will be doing some closures at Wisconsin intersection, just because we're going to be doing some removal of the medians, moving the medians around, so on and so forth, so there will be, you know, probably four, six-week stretch where we're going to have to close down that intersection, and we'll have the, the information available on our website, and redo the detour, so on and so forth, to accommodate that, but just want to kind of keep everybody in the loop and inform anybody out there who's watching what's going on, so, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments and suggestions from citizens? All right, discussion and possible action on consent agenda items.
Consent agenda items for tonight's meeting are as follows. Approve the minutes from the regular council meeting, minute, meeting of April 22nd, 2019, claims in the amount of $664,117.58. Approve the application submitted by River Fest for a community event to be held the week of July 16 and 21, 2019. Approval of the bid from Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation in the amount of $103,780 for the 2019 street maintenance project. Approve the LOE with S-E-H in the amount of $29,510 for a citywide sidewalk and pedestrian ramps inventory. Approval of a fence easement between the city of Hudson and Richard and Elsie Gunstrom at 2239 Namakagan Street. Approve, approve setting a public hearing date of June 17, 2019 for a zoning map amendment from RM1 Multiple Family Residential to RM2 Multiple Family Residential, and a comprehensive plan amendment from medium-density residential to high-density residential at St. Croix County Tax Parcel 236-2041-0000 Land Vest LLC. Discussion and possible action on final development plans for a building addition at 2700 Harvey Street, HP Group LLC. Approve the amusement device application submitted by Matthew Halawiki of Namco USA for the period of July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, and I've provided you with that application, the games are on the back of that application. Approve the operator license application submitted by Casey Van Dusart, Adrian Herbst, Megan Riley, Gabriel Rossini, and Christopher Wilson. Approve the amendment of the license premises for sellers' wine and spirits, 131 Carmichael Road, Suite 102 and 104, to include Suite 101.
Could we poll G, please?
Poll G, all right. Poll G, all right.
Move to approve the rest of consent.
Second.
Okay, motion in second to approve the rest of it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a roll call.
Roll, roll call.
Morissette.
Yes.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so item G, approve setting a public hearing date of June 17th, 2019 for a zoning map amendment from RM1 Multiple Family Residential to RM2 Multiple Family Residential, and a comprehensive plan amendment from medium-density residential to high-density residential at St. Croix County Tax Parcel 236-2041-00-000 Land Vest LLC.
Thank you. Just had some questions about it, because the last time we talked about it, we talked about the challenges with old thirty-five, and adding that higher-
Parking.
Right.
South, yeah.
And so I guess my question is, is are we sort of putting the cart before the horse on this one? Is, in terms of setting the public hearing?
Good question. This is Mike's item, so normally he'd be the one to talk about this.
It's just for a public hearing. You understand it's the public hearing, not-
Approval.
Yeah, approval of setting a public hearing.
Correct.
Not approving a substance.
And then the step after that would be to approve it or not approve it?
At a later date.
Yeah, and it wouldn't, it could be put on for discussion and possible action, but you would not have to take, you know, take any action.
Those questions would be answered by the time it gets there. They're just trying to get public opinion on the project.
This is straight, this, all this is, is just setting the public hearing date.
No, I get that, I get that. And I always see that come up as, then we make a decision right after the public hearing.
You can delay that as long as you want.
I mean, as long as we are getting that information ahead of that time, I guess I feel comfortable with that. You're setting it as June 17th?
Yeah.
Because I could tell you Plan Commission wants to see that as well.
Okay.
But they've also approved setting the public hearing.
Okay. Very good. I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Probably.
Call on it.
Yeah, sorry, I was about to get the, Morissette.
Aye.
Alms.
Yes.
DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Okay, so, communications and recommendations of the mayor?
We have four different proclamations. If I spoke with Joyce, if it's okay, we'll just read the summaries. We do have copies here, if anybody would like to, you know, see the originals, and they're on the website. The first proclamation is-
Can you just read, because since our municipal clerk is here, maybe you should read that one?
I can do that, if you'd like.
[laughing]
Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world as the oldest profession among public servants, and provides professional connections between the citizens, the governing bodies, and agencies at the local county and state levels, and whereas the duties of the municipal clerks are many, including serving as official record keeper for the municipality, issuing licenses and permits, facilitating the annual board review and municipal redistricting project, attending meetings, and serving as a community resource, and whereas the 1,854 municipal clerks and 72 county clerks in Wisconsin contribute to election administration by attending required training and dedicating themselves to providing fair, non-biased, nonpartisan, accurate, and responsible action, now therefore I, Mayor Rich O'Connor, do hereby recognize the week of May 5th through 11th, 2019 as municipal clerk's week, and further extend appreciation to our staff for the vital services they perform and the exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
Yay.
Thank you for your service.
The next one we have is Police Appreciation Week. I, Rich O'Connor, Mayor of the city of Hudson, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th, 18th of 2019 as Police Appreciation Week in the city of Hudson. Encourage all citizens to observe the week with law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and proclaim May 15th, 2019 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. And we have National Small Business Week. The week of May 5th through May 11th is hereby declared National Small Business Week in the city of Hudson, and call upon all citizens of Hudson to join in the special observance with appropriate events and commemorations. And the final one is National Travel and Tourism Week. And declare the week of May 5th through May 11th as National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Hudson, and call upon all citizens to join in the special observance with appropriate events and commemorations.
Okay, thank you. Appointment to Comprehensive Plan RFP Review and Steering Committee, so...
There was, we're required to have one Plan Commission member, so the mayor is requesting approval of Fred York.
Okay.
I'll move we approve. He's been a long time Plan Commission, born and raised Hudson guy. He knows, he knows Hudson pretty well.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, communications and items for future agendas. Anything from the council members? Okay, city attorney and city staff? Nope. All right, do I have a move to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, move to, or, we are adjourned, thank you.